Good morning, Lord. Thank you for giving us another beautiful day, Lord. And I thank you for the city and the people that make up the community. Lord, we'll ask you to bless our community and America and help us to get back to where we were at one time. And thank you for the ones on this board and their willingness to serve. Lead us that each day as it be your will. For sin, in Christ's name we pray. All right, number one on the agenda is a public hearing to read this district. I suppose more boundaries. John, three rivers gracefully have taken care of that for us. And you got a map up here, everybody can look at it if wanted to. And I think all the boards probably met two or three times before. So what we need to do is give a motion, come in this order. I guess I'm saying that right.
Might as well do that and the map together so they can match each other.
Okay.
And make sure it's a public hearing, so make sure nobody has any comments or questions.
All right, anybody got any questions on the map?
They did a lot of change, but three changes a good bit, that's all according to the census.
Yeah, three changes once. I mean, I might have to have some support and people.
On my new one?
With the new tissues, I'm like, worse than my last one.
Yeah. All right, any other, tell them answer questions, don't they? Oh, Neil, most of you set the boundaries. That most of Kevin Dale have said, same with parks. Any other questions or discussion?
It's the map and the.
The boundary order.
And order it here. All right, are you have a question or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. John, you got that light, didn't you?
That was that.
That was the best one yet, Mike.
That's what we aim to do. All right, now, next up in the part real business is Mr. Maddox. He's going to keep it brief and entertaining.
You're free. I'm free.
Mayor's got to pay some deals here to start with. Firstly, his invoice for the design, construction, administration, or communication system, family debt engineering for $65,000, $6.75.
So I got a motion by Will, same with Drew. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
The second one is a pair request for utility services for this material received as well for the communication system construction, $388,904.80.
All right, I motion my key to have a second. Same with Will. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
There's a third item. It's for leaders received on the past month for automated bakery project from Tesco, amount of $73,719.61.
Okay, also, Will, I'm on it. Kevin Dale, have a motion, have a second. Same with Drew. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
There is next item. He buys a steel hose and a hose mounted transformer just for general construction maintenance purposes. We normally, I guess, don't buy it. Our quantities are small enough, we just get quotes, but these things are sold today, just can't get a lot. But quote, we will should advertise when we get, if we're inventory.
All right, advertising, steel hoses, and hose mounted transformer. I got most of my will, same with Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
Here item number five. We work with Cook Hogg Engineering on spending our ARCA funds. We do get matching money from the state to do water and sewer projects. This is the improvements to the rapid road gas station. Again, that's an area we're seeing some growth and, you know, different things are planned out that way. So that's where all the sewer kind of comes there and then gets pumped to the plant. So we want to get that, get its equipment there. It's been there a while, so it just pretty much make that essentially a new gas station. They did this competitively with a little bid with Phil's contracting, amount of $393,000. This will be paid through ARCA funds.
Okay. Most of my Drew, same with Kevin Dale. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
Here is another item. Highway 30, this station, it's a pair of our bigger list stations out by the Wal-Mart distribution center. I started having trouble with it a couple of weeks together with what thing led to another, and we've had to do quite a bit of replacement work on that today. Still working on it. Do want to think that is emergency type situation. We just not been able to get quotes on it because you never kind of pull one thing out, something else is there. Once we get through that station, should be beginning pretty good shape. It's actually, I guess, make more aware and approval that we've, I guess, clear emergency situation to get that station repaired.
All right, what's the will of board? Most of my Drew, same with Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
There's been a couple of meetings ago, we got an emergency declaration to get it fucking repaired. This was one of our small trucks that, this could be a high mileage truck, but wait until you would come in, the drive shaft fell out, that was a transfer case. Here we couldn't get anybody quotes repairing the truck. We did find a garage that had parts and y'all agreed it was an emergency declaration. Enterprise tire and service. They complete repaired on the truck. It was an amount of $18,043.31. I think I'll get reported back to the board.
You already got the emergency.
Yes, yes, y'all gave it that a couple of minutes ago, but it's just report back with the fair answer.
Okay. Any questions? All right.
Now, the break then to be approved, you would say, that means this, when we're at for that.
Emergency?
Yeah, the emergency declaration, I just tell.
They've already approved.
Sorry, it just should be reported and then reported and written to state.
Right, y'all need to report it. Oh, the eight item again, it's got the little reports back. Y'all let's clear a couple items, service. We put it in auction back in April, the gas company, the trophy and non-operational backhoe. Those two items together are $88,888 at condition. Yeah, I think that's just something we need to read. If you want to give it, yeah, I'll give it. The last item, we work with M.D.O. that they replaced three of our, we had to move our gas farm. We coordinated design and bid of that project. It's out to utility contractors, they say completed the job, they submitted their invoice to $90,034. There are a couple of things that Will is still doing, but it's not probably over that. We've got to verify a couple of quantities, but we haven't submitted it to M.D.O. They're going to send us money forward. Soon as we, you know, get that translated with M.D.O., we'd just feel like paying the contractor. So like our obligation to pay this, this invoice to this out to utility contractor and just kind of ending this last verification, I will.
So most of my Will, second by Kevin Dale. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. All of them, I will. Thank you, sir. Thank y'all. All right. Good evening.
I got you.
All right, where are you at?
Item number one, approve the change order for the midword for the municipal court building for not to exceed the amount of $10,725. We've got one quote, we're waiting to get the second quote. This would be for the judge's bench and the witness stand at the new court building.
You know, with all we know, where the judge's bench will come. Yeah, we're. That wouldn't even work. So this is kind of. Most of my Drew, you have a second?
Same.
Same with Will. Any other questions or discussion? Just going to shoot, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
Item number two, phase two approval for asphalt paving, the C Streets. Mr. Mayor, you and I met for a few routes that we were going to present to the board and go in bringing the board members, talking with them before the meeting. Several of them had additional ideas and wanted to look at some additional routes and the cost of those routes. Mr. Mayor, I, those that should be, the sheet that, to show those different routes and the costs associated with those routes.
But this won't be in phase two or weekend, I don't see it.
Whatever you guys decide to include.
I would think we do it phase three and include it. Would y'all?
So what would be phase two? It's all back through.
Uh, main parking lot, please. Main entry road. Flashpad road. Tennis court parking lot overlay. So is that a, that had been approved in phase two?
No, this was phase two has been through.
All right. It's all need.
Does that tennis court overlay include the?
No.
Strip that's been created already?
Well, we got to build, build that strip before they pave it.
Right. So that's not on here?
That's not on there.
And they could continue on while they're here? In theory, they can get all this done.
That, I mean, I had not spoken with them about it, the list got a little longer today, so I had not spoken with them about it.
Okay.
Schedule wise, it may not be something they would come in and do all at one time. I'm sure they'd come in and do the phase one that we released and probably come back to do what are phase two route for release.
When would phase two potentially start?
I'm not sure at this time. Depends on how much you wanted to have in phase two. You know, originally what we were going to present were two additional routes, which wasn't a lot of volume, and they probably could have completed that while they were here in phase one. But the list is pretty extensive.
The reason I add Sam T Barkley from the elementary to the railroad, if at all possible, if we could get that done before school starts.
Before school starts.
That would be ideal.
And that's first of all?
Yeah, it's very soon.
Yeah, if they could do it first, I don't know.
Now, if you approve that route, at least I could coordinate with them to work that in with the phase one routes. We could coordinate with them to have them do that route first.
That's what I would think.
I think that would be a good idea.
Because they're scheduled to be here the weekend of the fifteenth. That should be plenty of time to do the phase one routes. On that additional route.
So the phase two is Glenfield, the Moss Hill, Sam T. And is that all that we are wanting to get in phase two? The sports place, the sports place, main parking was there, that was in that as well?
The options.
Is it those phase two?
Just it kind of be the same thing, not by August, but in the fall when there's not as much going on, pretty good for you two.
But it just seems to me, though, if we're going to do main, the parking, does it not make sense to do the splash pad and the south bar, all of that stuff at the same time if we're out there, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I think that's what that'd be. Yeah.
All right. I don't know. I guess the only thing in question would be the tennis court overlay, is that what we're saying in phase two?
Yeah, the overlay, that, that will park. What is that, right? Or is it the new one out there? You remember?
Uh, this is, this is.
This is.
This is the existing parking lot.
This is the parking lot that we have.
Well, the pavement is.
The pavement is. You know, when we built it, ten or twelve years ago, we just put one lift on because that was the recommendation because hose was going to pop, you know, the sauce pot. So, you know, there notes here, sauce pots had popped up. And then.
It was, it rains.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And. So they've backed out all sauce pots that popped up, dug out and placed.
But I mean, now, that tennis court parking lot is used for a lot more than just tennis courts with all the things that have fallen on out there. So it needs to be done, and I don't know.
They're great.
We've discussed, we didn't, like, it needed it when that first build, they just put one, they didn't rock.
Yeah, they did.
Plans for two, just hasn't been done. But the other part of this sports place, that hasn't, we hadn't discussed that at all, and that's a lot of asphalt covering that existing parking lot of the ball fields.
Oh, you mean the main?
The main parking. We just had it sealed over a few years ago, didn't we? First check.
Um, it's probably seven years ago, six or seven.
Well, I mean, I don't.
It's whatever, three years normally, depending on traffic.
It's not made last fifteen years, ten, five or six.
They've been said it's done in this term, y'all on the board, we've sealed it, we haven't lasted.
Marcus Johnson?
Was it?
Yeah.
Maybe.
No, down the asphalt, see. Yeah, because I think we've done.
Uh, we have a question. We're trying to get Sam T walk up and down before school. Is there a way we can move Sam T walk up into the first phase?
We can. We can try to.
But if, just phase one's already been approved.
Yeah.
If we approve phase two, if we approve phase two, then that goes scheduling.
Yeah, you don't have to move it up.
Yeah.
That's more. Phase two.
Yeah.
Is there not patchwork to done? Have you looked at Sam T Barkley?
Uh, have, there are a few areas that need to be patched, but the other areas are done fairly quick, so I'll take it we let them move as soon as possible, they probably get it repaired.
Their final many of the.
The week of the fifteenth, that means it'll be the fifteenth.
Yeah. It'd be mostly.
Might be.
All right. So, yeah, they'd have time to get the patch. Thanks, old Johnny. You don't know?
You got anything else going on, Johnny?
Oh. Well, you say, I mean.
If we can't get it done, we can move it to some other time theoretically, but if we're going to do it, I'd like to get it done before. I want to be working on it right at school starts.
But if you can't do it before, before twenty first of August.
August first.
Whoa. If you can't do it before then, without the way to Christmas holidays, if they can do it, well, it may be too late. You already have a break to fall?
There is a fall break, which.
It's a week in October, like the fourteenth.
The middle of October, like the fourteenth of October, then send your, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday off, schools after that, that week. I can check the calendar and that.
I think if we get them here to do work, as hard as it's been to get people to do work, we're just having to count on that man over there to help us control traffic when we're doing it and try to work around the school.
They can't get through, but the first, they'll beat this down.
Yeah, because we, we don't.
And maybe we can start on the end, it don't need patchwork. You look at it, Johnny.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And all fact to have that is, if any way possible at all, to try to have that down on Sam T, that's probably one of the worst areas to have any additional issues than what we already have during the first part of school.
Yeah. Well, we hopefully they get it before. If not, we might have to wait a couple of weeks after, or three, you know, let it get kind of set. All right, what do y'all think about phase two? Any other questions or comment?
Is there some kind of, we can move the Sam T park to try to move it up to phase one, or phase two.
I think that's a priority, regardless of how much traffic's on that road, school buses and everything else.
But I mean, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, prove it, it's not, it'll be same page.
I was just saying, I would be approving that, we want to do all of these, and then it'd be, Will got the scheduling part.
Yeah, it won't make any difference in the phase one or two. You go tell them, we won't.
That's right, they, they won't care. As long as the trip works done and they overlay it, they don't care for changes.
Frankie, what's another account?
He got it suspended.
Yep.
It's a lot more than that, I'll do.
Yeah, so I'd say we absolutely do.
Oh, yeah.
Just many people come in, maybe they're all making track.
I get a lot of talent at that same time. Danger that day, after the last years of.
So, Will, my question would be if the complex, the tennis complex is included, what do we need to do to talk about that strip that I talked about? Do we just need to get?
Well, I just need to get quotes on the building out of the base for that road, just like we did the sports place road.
Right, and add that, just as an addition to this.
It'd just be a separate item and then.
You can go to me, I mean, if that's on, we don't have, you just need.
Right. It just needs to be included when they do this, if we can get it framed out on it.
Yeah, and that's get the base first, so.
I mean, we could potentially do a change order for a contractor on the road to go over there and build the other road.
Well, that's true.
I have not figured what that cost will be, but I can get with the mayor on it tomorrow, and we can send you out a cost, and y'all agree to it.
I mean, didn't we all agree that that's something we need to do for traffic flow over there?
Yes.
So that, that needs to be done.
Yes. Yeah, we can just do a change order over there, build it now. We don't have to do while they're here. And they left the base, they didn't do that for.
It's very short, it's not.
It's not.
Yeah, no.
We just don't have the equipment in house to do it.
I'd say, hey, for that, it'd be a lot cheaper to buy.
Yeah.
What the fuck? All right, what's the will of board on phase two?
So we approve phase two and then look at the change order.
Now, you remember that? That a motion?
Yes.
Have a second. Same with parks. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
Item number three, approve the bid to M&amp;N excavators for the secondary roads within the sports place.
Yeah, that's what we talked about. That's what we talked about last.
Contract amount is $76,166.31.
That's the total?
No, that'd be that overlay.
Well, that's the total for their.
Building the base.
This, the change order, which I don't think we got to yet, that's, that's going to be separate from that road, is that the range by?
Right, that'd be in addition to the seventy six.
Most of my Kevin Dale, have a second. Same with Drew. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
Item number four is approve change order number one for the sports place secondary roads for not to exceed the amount of $10,000. I see it's got the change order amount, it'd be $5,325.
All right, most approve change order. Most of my Will, second, my Keith, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
Item number five is approve pair request, M&amp;N excavators for pair request number one, for the sidewalk replacement project.
All right, most approve that. They already moved in. Did they, did they or? All right, we got most of my Keith, have a second.
A second.
All right, second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. It does, you know.
Thank you, Will.
Bill said you was going to hang around and take his place. If anybody had any questions. All right, let's move to the police department.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got new hire approved for two officers, two men on the hire of the officers. One is for Jordan Tudor. Jordan Tudor has about eight years' experience. He's currently, has been working for, and he wishes to make a company, help police departments. He's already certified, he's already got experience. He's lived here in the office on Apple Street, he currently own, has bought a place just over the county line, and he wants to come and work and give an opportunity to do so. I believe that you know him also.
Yeah, they, they live.
So I asked my board to set her hiring Jordan Tudor first.
Some of it, most of my Will, have a second. Same with Drew. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
The second hire will be my first, I'm very, actually very proud of coming in my job. We hired him as a, or had him as an intern, and I actually got him hooked up with another internship after he got a little further in his college career at Starwood Police Department in town of mine. And he's come back and expressed interest in working with the company, the young police department. His name is Mike Smith. He's from our community, I think most of board members know him, and I'd be, I would like to offer him position to be on police department.
Most of my Kevin Dale, have a second. Same with Keith, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
Thank you, members. To the board.
Hey, you got anything?
I don't know.
Clear the department.
I've got a promotion request approved. When any life of retired opened up a domino effect, and so we put together the application process for in-house and put together a hiring panel to interview and recommend who needed to be promoted within the department. And they brought me the recommendation of Jack Whiteside for lieutenant and Ryan Pollard for driver operator, and I support their decision for the request to the board.
Jack, who?
Ryan. Ryan Pollard, R-Y-A-N-P-O-L-L-A-R-D. Ryan, he lives here now, he's originally from Tenola County, but he lives in the county now.
Okay. All right, most of my Kevin Dale, have a second. My Drew, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious.
That's all we have, that was before.
Three, two, two, thank you. All right, buildings, Vic.
I even have the one thirty fourth. I'm wrong, even had a request from Winfield Stories at eleven oh six West and Tate for various in the parking lot requirements was approved, and the siding, siding and parking lot were approved. Had a request from the city for two oh seven Carter Avenue for a various siding requirements. It was approved, that's the, the weak build. Request from area union two oh five South Central for a various setback requirements. It was approved. Request from T R Y Park Place for approval of the subdivision on the east side of Oxford Loop, eight hundred block and five eighty-eight, five ninety, five ninety-two, six fourteen, six sixteen, six eighteen, Winfield Road to rezone from Ag to S N eight, it was approved pending zoning change.
It says S ten on here.
Oh, I meant ten, I'm sorry. S N ten. And I'd like to set a public hearing for August the sixth to rezone that for T R Y.
All right, I got most of my Drew, set a public key for August the sixth, second by far. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. Thank you. All right, I'm about to translate the way, but wait. Bill, do you go, you know?
Yeah, I'll have her.
All right, to you. All right, to you.
I've emailed Joe my report, but, um, Janet Burr is retired, she served with the business office, and I wanted to ask the boards to, uh, allow us to replace her with Elena Wilder. She, uh, is a Blue Mountain graduate and has done two internships at the museum. I think she'll do a good job, she's Mr. David Walker's granddaughter, if you might know her from that.
Yeah, she's, she's, she's a good one.
She is, she is.
All right, I got most of my Keith, I have a second, same with Will, any other questions or discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, both. What's your carry? Thank you. All right. Anything, nothing on that, they didn't consider agenda, once anybody sees anything, they won't correct on the minister's plan documents for last month, or this one. And, uh, action agenda, no problem, storm shelter. Uh, lease agreement for Public Service Commission, it's forty-four hundred, we just need to prove that, is that right? And I'll sign it when we approve. They've already moved in, so I hope we approve. I got most of my Will to have a second. That's same with Kevin Dale, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, both. What's your carry? Lease agreement for MJ Russell Properties. A little bit lost, they tell me what that is, you know?
That was Bill of D's request to use the property for special events.
Oh, okay.
And I think the agreement was, as long as it's insured, as long as they insure MJ Russell Properties and they would do it, just let y'all know, and that's all, no, no, no payment.
Do you hear that, Bill of D? He's saying, MJ for property, let us use it for special events, and we know and make sure it's got insurance.
Like that, that old agreement.
Yeah. All right, that's, uh.
Except this time, no, no.
Until, until it's sales.
Unless you decide to promote it.
Nope. So it's no, no change, just renewing it?
Uh, there was some slight changes, but basically I took something out that shouldn't have been there about, uh, indemnification, so other than that, no block market anymore, that's it.
Most of my Keith, I have a second, same with Drew, any other questions or discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, both. What's your carry? And then, uh, approve a quote for municipal court attorney. So, you got it, right?
She sent you out.
And it's just, uh, it comes from, uh, what's the name of the company?
Fairfield.
Yeah, Fairfield, and they got state contract, so that's.
We don't have to get it. That was my question.
Yeah. So we need approval for that. So my Kevin Dale, I have a second, same with parks, any other questions or discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, both. All right, next, I'll sit in the executive session, what's that?
There's one other one, I'll bring up, if you want to do a state, I thought it's all sitting on it, it's on there, we got a whole stack of, uh, tax exemptions that came back. Always special.
Yeah. All right, what about the executive session?
Per personnel issue.
Personnel issue, okay. All right, I think most of the executive session for personnel, somebody else got something?
Possibly pickles, I have two minutes. Sure. Um, I'm going, I hate to be the dead horse, because I'm actually the only, the only one that's a fan of it, but the trees on Park Plaza Drive, um, I, I'm for them, I know y'all have talked about them a lot. Um, but they're becoming a significant life safety issue for my, my brother, he has the farming operation around there, and his sprayer is not like a car that's down low on the ground. But his feet are about eight feet in the air, and now that the trees have gotten bigger, it completely blocks his view to be able to get out of those fields on the Park Plaza to move. And, and he's got to be able to get in and out with tractors and the sprayer, and, uh, I'd just like a request that on the paved entrances go into those fields, um, if we could take out one tree on each side, if they could be trimmed from the bottom, um, that's what I would ask for, but with him being up that high, the only way to prevent him from, you know, potentially getting hit, and, and it's happened every year, um, and then yesterday, um, he, when he was pulling out, it was so close, he just jerked it in reverse to try to keep from getting hit, and it threw him against the windshield as he was going backwards, just trying to avoid getting hit. I know a car locked their tires up last year when he was pulling out of there, um, I just, I don't think there's a way to trim the top or the bottom and, and give him view because of the height they are, and I just requested one tree on each side, just where the paved entrances are going in, if we could consider taking one tree on each side out, just so that he could actually see and get out. I've got some pictures that, uh, I could show y'all that are from the cab of his sprayer sitting in those areas, if y'all want to see them, that kind of shows that he, he really can't see anything at all until he's actually in the tree, and, uh, we all know how the traffic gets on that road.
Have we had some that were, that have been damaged or broken? No, no, hasn't there been some that have been broken or.
Yes, there's one.
What I'm saying is, maybe, one of those maybe can be relocated to replace some of the ones that have been.
Now, I prefer them to be relocated.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Probably a thousand dollar tree.
Yeah, and, and I'd be fine with them being relocated and just extended on down, but also because it stops at that new road.
Oh.
Um, he said the only entrance that he could pull out of and actually see is across from Elagabe where it looks like, uh, the trees on each side.
So elevated?
Yeah, I mean, his feet are this high in the air, and so no matter how much you trim under them, he's still looking through like the main body of the tree, um.
Terry, you see Dunn spraying, they got some more done?
He, he sprays each crop season, he has.
What time this year?
This year, I think he'll have, he'll have burn down and a little more, um, herb side, pesticide application, but typically he has six to eight applications at minimum a year in that sprayer that he has to do there, and then you've got hard to sand input, so.
We, for you, we might could take. Call T-Blow, I think they got tree spray, and, you know, if those are too big, it's, they go move behind, I think they got tree spray, they probably come replant them, relocate them.
Yeah, and I, I would suggest just keep on extending them down the same.
Yeah, we.
Because it stops it, the road you are putting in, if I remember right, it's about where the tree stopped.
It looks a lot.
Um, the car wash there.
Yeah. We'll check with our T-Blow, since they'll launch their tree sprayer, they probably will come, they've told me before they, they'd come move, we had a couple of them, so I'll check, I'll leave my tree there, like I said, I'm a fan of the trees. Yeah, I like the tree.
They'll probably, they may take something along, they prefer to move the trees and then toward the fall of the year.
Yeah, they probably will.
And literally, if they, if you will call or have, Mike's father?
His John Walker.
John Walker, even one of them, I'll get them, we'll call police department, we'll try to get some out there to help them move and block traffic till we get done.
Yeah, you, right, they won't work for, like, oh.
And that.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll still call them. And give a shout, thank you, sir. Yeah, we probably do it for motion, move two trees, relocate. One on each side. So I've got most of my Will, I have a second, my Drew, any other questions or discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, both.
Okay.